Thank you. We are coming up to seven o'clock, but as I do the housekeeping, I'm sure we're here at seven. Just if people have got silent on their phones, et cetera, et cetera. Brilliant. So first of all, thank you for coming out this evening and again for the tape. I'm councillor Amory Nixie, Chair of Ramsgate Town Council, and welcome everybody. Straight into the agenda of our full council meeting, an extraordinary one. Item number one, apologies, please.
We have apologies from councillor Heatherington, who has a personal commitment, and councillor Knight, who's unwell, and councillor Reverend Piper, who's unwell.
Thank you. Okay. Number two, declarations of interest. As last week, I refer back to the TDC email that we were sent. I'll check that again with the town clerk, it still stands for tonight's meeting. We do not have to give declarations of interest with regards to social media groups. Okay, so on that note, any declarations of interest? Lovely, thank you. Item number three. Mansden Airport call for comments to consider the town council's response to the Secretary of State's letter inviting comments on the recently published independent aviation assessors draft report. The suite of responses to its first consultation and other representations seemed relevant for the purposes of the redetermination of the application. So we do have a report from councillor Rossetti, and as requested in the council meeting of the 27th of October, and a quote from the related information from Alan Stratford Associates Limited will be coming to both those soon. Is there anybody that would like to talk first? Councillor Alban, councillor Green.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank councillor Rossetti for what he's written. He knows the downside more than I do. Couple of issues I have difficulty with that he's referred to, and some of the others, I wouldn't know whether that's right or wrong. However, I do thank him for that because that does give us a chance to have a balance of what our views are. So I'm grateful for that, and that's all thank you to him.
Okay.
For the moment.
Thank you very much. Councillor Green, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I need to explain to anybody here what issues they're about, but it's obvious that within the council, there are different views on this matter. And I think we have a number of options tonight. We could write and just welcome the Secretary of State's commissioned report, pointing out that it more or less agrees with our previous submission. Or we could try and write a further report ourselves from within the council. Or we could commission another report from our expert, Stratford's, Alan Stratford Associates, to address some of the things that have been raised since the Secretary of State's pointy's report. Of those three options, I don't think just welcoming the Secretary of State's report is enough. I would counsel against trying to write something ourselves because of the difference in views within the council. And I personally would, and I'm going to propose, that we commission another report from Alan Stratford Associates to try to address, from an expert's point of view, some of the things that have been said about the Secretary of State's experts' report. The main thing that I think needs to be addressed, and I think still isn't clear to some people, is the difference between benefit. I think it's quite obvious that there would be some benefits from an airport. I happen to think they would be outweighed by the disadvantages to the town, but there would be some benefits. But I, reading what I have about the DCO process, benefit is not the issue. What is the issue in a DCO is whether there is a need. And I think it needs comments from us, and probably a lot of other people, pointing out that some of the criticisms of the Secretary of State's experts' report mistake need for benefit. So I would suggest that that and a number of other issues that have been raised, I think this council would be justified in commissioning another report from Alan Stratford's Limited.
Thank you. If anybody would like to talk about us at all, if anybody's got any comments.
Chair, you know, I'm not far from any expert in this at all. However, having read the Secretary of State's independent report that was commissioned, I wholeheartedly support it. And I don't know, what was the cost of the last report that we had? Is it necessary, personally speaking? I don't think it is. And my own opinion is, I think that we should go along with just advising for RTC to respond to the Secretary of State, just saying that we fully support the independent review.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion from councillor Alban?
Is that a motion from councillor Alban? So if I could just reply to that, councillor Alban. So the last report that was written for us was £2,000 plus VAT, and we'd put aside £4,000 for if we needed a follow-up report, of which we've asked Peter Forbes for a quote for that follow-up, and he's quoted it again, so he's lowered his price and said he could do that again for £2,000 plus VAT. I have to admit, and I'm quite aware of what's going on in Mansden generally, that I would say that I also don't think it's quite enough for the town council to turn around and say, you know, yes, we agree with the report, because there are other things that come into play. And what we're looking at is for an independent person to write a report for us, which we would then assess before we agreed to send it in, to look at the other things that other people are saying too. So we are actually responding to all the things that have been put in, so other information from other people and so on and so forth.
Could I ask what the other things are?
Things like RSPs, comments, other stakeholders, other interested parties' comments.
But have they not said what they've always said?
No, no, they haven't. If I could...
Yes, certainly.
Please do.
No, they haven't. The grounds seem to shift according to... They shifted from when the planning inspectors made their reports recommending that the DCO was turned down. And RSP's responses have shifted partly because the economics of the country has shifted. It is different now, post Brexit and post Covid. And they've shifted because they're now proposing to, they say, to invest far more, much more money, become greener, and...
What, no flights at all?
Well, that would be the ultimate in greenness, wouldn't it? But so there are lots of things that RSP are saying they can do. I don't think it's economically feasible for them to do some of the things they're claiming, but that's just my view. I'm not an aviation expert, which is why I think it's essential that we have somebody else, independent of us, who knows the industry, to comment on the things that we have begun to say.
Thank you, councillor Piper.
I'd just like to say that I will not support getting another report written by Peter Forbes on behalf of the council. I'm not sure about how effective his previous report was, and I don't think he is the aviation expert that he's led some members to believe that he is. And in terms of a need for an airport, I've always firmly believed that when the airport opens, it will open up jobs for lots of people who need jobs in Fannick. It's a very deprived area, people are struggling for work. And I will not be supporting another commission for this man, Peter Forbes, because I don't think it's a wise spending of public money. And I'd like that recorded, please. Thank you.
I think the problem that we have is the Secretary of State himself conceded on need, so it's very difficult for other people to argue the fact that there is a need for it when he himself said there isn't a need for it. But okay, thank you councillor Young, and then councillor Wing, thank you.
Can I just, you know, just come back?
Definitely.
The Secretary of State doesn't live here, and he doesn't see the deprivation, and he doesn't... Not so much, if you could just let me finish.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. So in terms of, I don't know, the big economic, national, maybe not. Like councillor Alban, I'm not an expert on the airport, but you've surely got to give these business people a chance to get it up and running. And if it fails, it fails. But I think that we need to be behind it, so, to support it, so that the people who live here have an opportunity to get jobs, we can work with the universities for engineering degrees, and youngsters can take apart aeroplanes together again. The potential to have that airport up and running is huge, and I think that we should support it.
Absolutely.
And in reply to that, the DCO is an NSIP. It was decided that it had to be nationally, so I know you're looking at it locally, but it was an NSIP, so it's not just locally. We really have to consider, it's the DCO we're talking about here. The other thing is, then you're not looking at the things that would negate the need, the things that we'd lose from it as well. So there are two sides of the story. But at the end of the day, the Secretary of State conceded on need, whether that's national or local, he conceded on need. That is a fact, and we have to consider that. I've got councillor Young, then I've got councillor Wing, I've got councillor Green, and I've got councillor Moore. Thank you.
I did state at the time, when Peter Forbes gave that presentation, that I thought it was, he came across to me as more personal, and not enough data. And when I looked him up, it seemed to me that all he was doing in his report was repeating things that he'd said prior to actually coming here with a presentation of, that we paid £2,000 for. So to me, I wouldn't dream of supporting it. And I think it was wrong money spent, and to even suggest that we have him again is beyond...
Thank you, councillor Wing.
I mean, I sat in a meeting last night where I'd read, prior to that meeting, I'd read a document that actually evidenced that eight independent reports had been commissioned by TDC from six independent bodies, and they all concluded the same. And I sit here, looking at a similar scenario here. I don't know how many independent reports have been commissioned by various people or undertaken by the Secretary of State, including PIS. And they've all concluded the same thing, that there is no evidence need, or there is not enough evidence need. So I sit here, okay, as a Green councillor, so I'm never going to support the expansion of aviation, but in the cold light of day, the documents that the experts are writing are not just one expert, but a range of experts, who are telling us there is no need for that airport to be here. So I do not support the airport for that reason. Probably, I don't think I support the spending of more money on a further, a further report from, and it could be somebody else, that is almost certainly to tell us exactly the same thing. So is there a way that we can respond but reflect the views that exist in this chamber? And the views that exist in this chamber are that the majority of us are going with the experts' advice, that there is no evidence need, and therefore, that an airport at Mansden is doomed to fail. But can we also acknowledge that some councils in this room do feel there should be an airport on that site? I don't know, I'm just trying to move this from an impasse and avoid the spending of more money. According to what I've read, and it hasn't come from one section, there have been a number of reports from various places that have not evidenced a need for that airport on that site. So I cannot support it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Green, and then councillor Huxley.
Just on a narrow point about Peter Forbes' credentials. I think he has sent his CV...
He did, he did send it through. And it was sent out to everybody in an email.
To the town clerk.
Yeah.
Well, for a large number of years now, he's been commissioned by various people to write reports on aviation matters. I mean, I think his credentials are probably as good. I mean, some of the names that he's written reports for are major players in the British aviation industry. I mean, I think his credentials are second to none, really.
Yes.
So that's, that's my answer to that. And as I said, RSP, they argue, or they try to argue, a good case to make the best of what they're offering. We all know the deficiencies, I think we know the deficiencies in their case, in that they have no experience of running an airport. They have no identifiable funding. They have no identifiable airlines. They have no identifiable freight transporters. But they write a good case, and they've convinced a lot of people locally that they're the answer to their employment needs. Despite the fact that Mansden Airport has never employed more than 200 people. Probably about the same as the pub over the road's support.
Really, councillor Green?
In numbers.
Oh, come on. You can't compare an airport to Wetherspoons, please.
In numbers.
Well, it's been negated. You get nine jobs for every job you put in an airport, you get nine jobs in the local economy. So even if you want to... Times nine, straight away, not with Wetherspoons.
Right. Your turn to speak. Thank you. If you could go through the chair, I'd appreciate it.
Sorry, Chair, it just rang me out, something rotten happened.
I'm sorry. Mansden finished on 150 jobs, Wetherspoons employ 150, so...
Sorry, Chair, you're talking rubbish here now, Chair. I have to object to this. There are nine jobs, and proven facts, for every job you have in an airport. Now, if you want to call it 150, 200, whatever you like to call it on the airport, there are nine jobs backing that up. And if you're telling me Wetherspoons have got more than 2,000 people working there, you got it.
I would still appreciate you to go through the chair.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, Chair, I'm happy to withdraw that.
I'm sorry, Chair, I can't listen to this, this is just absolute rubbish. And until this council can get its act together, you know, and comparing an airport to Wetherspoons, really? Thank you, goodnight.
The one they had up there, yes.
Sorry, town clerk.
Councillor Huxley, thank you.
Councillor Moore.
Oh, beg your pardon, it was, I beg your pardon councillor Moore, I do apologise.
That's why I was complaining about him speaking out of turn. Thank you. It's not very well to look at this airport running. I've lived here long enough to see it running several times, and it never did anything. And as you say, there were very few people worked there. But if it's up and running again, and it's going to be three to five years before anybody gets a job there, because they've the licenses to do, the safety checks, they have to build a tower, haven't they? But, you know, all this takes time. And apart from that, how many of us are still going to be alive and around with pollution that comes from that airport? And looking at it reasonably, not pie in the sky, how many children's education is going to be ruined by the noise of these planes coming over every hour? And I know they're not going to come every hour, and they're going to be silent.
Okay, so I've got councillor Crittenden, councillor Masterson, thank you.
I just wanted to come back to, we've discussed the pros and cons. I think we do have different opinions about whether an airport is financially viable. I personally don't think it's financially viable. But what I think we're really looking at is, do we have another independent assessment? Rather than the pros and cons, and rights and wrongs, of numbers of this and numbers of that. And I'm sorry, Chair, but I'm just going to ask, can we get back to that question?
Absolutely, yes, thank you. You're welcome, right, councillor Masterson.
Well, I was just going to support what councillor Moore said about the noise. Councillor Rossetti says, implies there'll be seven four sevens and seven seven sevens, jump by jets for an hour, 200 feet above landscape. Yes, it will affect everybody's lives.
I think, I mean, let's go back to, you know, the timeline of what's happened so far. The planning inspectorate agreed that it wasn't a good idea, okay? The Secretary of State overruled that, and then conceded defeat on need. And then we've had an independent report by OvArap's, you know, engineering firm, and they've had aviation specialists in. They backed up the original report from the planning inspectorate, saying that there wasn't the need, and again, came out against it. So that's the state of play at the moment. And again, as councillor Crittenden said, basically, what we're looking at this evening is, where do we go as a council from here with responding to this? So there's a motion on the table at the moment with regards to getting an independent expert on it. And let's look at the pros and cons of this. I mean, yes, of course, it's money, we don't want to spend that. Yes, they're already sort of effectively saying the things that the majority of the council are saying with regards to, we know that there's no need. And yet, to be clear on it, to have an independent person on it, also makes it sound like it's not just coming from us, it actually is somebody that we have asked to look at the data and be independent from us. There's a lot to be said for that, money or no money. So it's weighing up whether we want to do that or whether we don't want to do that. Of course, there are pros and cons to both of that. But we have a motion on the table already, so if we could just read that motion again, please, town clerk. Oh, sorry, unless councillor Green wants to speak first.
But just to say, our danger is that we would be seen as being nimby's, not in our backyard.
Yes.
If we don't have an independent report to make the points that, or to address the points that RSP are making in that event.
Okay, I've got councillor Crittenden, councillor Huxley, thank you.
My concern about having another independent report is how many times are we going to be doing this? How many times is this going to go back and forth? And how many times are we going to be funding an independent report? I know we said last time this came before us that we thought there might be a second one, but we are batting this back and forth. That is my, that's my concern, is how many times we're going to have to do this.
Well, let's look at that. We did say that we had money, that we would do this before, so we have actually said that prior. Now, don't forget, this is the first DCO that was quashed, and the protocol of that is, the Secretary of State therefore has to give you, and I, also what I'm looking for, an allowed time to write in why you might think there is need. He has to get an independent report on so that he can assess it up, so it doesn't look like he's just making the decision. And therefore, we have the rights to reply to that. He then has to make another decision, he then has to say yes or no to it. Now, we don't know what he's going to say to that, and then, of course, the next bit goes after. But that's sort of like, you know, where are we going with this one for that? So this independent report would be to OvArap's. But yes, I take your point, how many of these would there be? It's a very good question, because again, this is new territory, isn't it? I've got councillor Huxley, then councillor Piper.
Well, since the report we're talking about recently publishes an independent aviation assessors draft report, so sure, we would just go with that. I agree with councillor Alban, I think, just say we would support it. Time's running out, we need to get on with this.
Okay.
I don't think we should have another report.
Okay, councillor Piper.
It's okay, thank you, Chair. It's okay, I don't believe that Peter is an independent person, I think he's biased. And anyway, I've just said I won't support it, so, yeah, thank you.
So we'll read out the motion, which doesn't have a second at the moment. So if this falls, then we still have to decide what to do as a council. So we'd have to have another proposal after this if it falls, okay? So, town clerk, thank you.
Councillor Green, please correct me, but I believe the motion is to commission Alan Stratford Associates at a cost of £2,000 to undertake an independent assessment of the current raft of, suite of paperwork, and with a concentration on identifying the difference between need and benefit.
For the sake of giving this a chance, I'm going to second this so that we can have a vote on it, okay? So I will second that. All those in favour? Okay, all those against?
The motion failed.
Lovely, thank you, right. So we're at the stake now, where we as a council need to work out...
The last three were recorded, done.
Yes.
Just actually request a plan before the votes take...
Yes, too late for a record, surely, vote please, surely.
Not a coincidence, then, in a lot of cases, not.
No, I think we can, we can report that now. So if, Chair, if I go through everyone's names?
Yes, please.
If you can answer for, against, or abstain. Councillor Alban?
Against.
Councillor Ara?
Against.
Councillor Austin?
Against.
Councillor Crittenden?
Against.
Councillor Green? Councillor Heatherington's absent, councillor Huxley?
Against.
Councillor Knight is absent, councillor Makinson?
For.
Councillor Moore?
Against.
Councillor Nixie?
For.
Councillor Linda Piper?
Against.
Councillor Young?
Against.
And councillor Wing?
Against.
Thank you, councillors.
Thank you. Okay, so we're at the stake now, and we're trying to find what the council needs to do. Do you have a proposal for the council, how the council needs to reply to this?
Chair, I'd like to propose that Ramsgate Town Council responds to the...
Suite of papers.
Yeah. To fully support the independent report that the Secretary of State has gained, and fully support the content of that report.
Thank you, do I have a second, then? Councillor Crittenden, thank you.
Oh, I wanted to make an amendment, sorry. I would, sorry, Steve.
That's all right.
It's... It's been seconded first.
But my amendment...
No, 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 it needed to be seconded first, we've got a second, that's fine, you can make your...
I'd like to add, and I think I've forgotten what I was going to add. I'd like to add that we also ask that a decision is made with all due haste as to the status of, the potential possibility of an airport, because people's lives, because, I don't know how to phrase this, they've got to get on and make... because, I don't know how to phrase this, they've gotta get on and make a decision, that's what I'm trying to add to it. Because we, we are, I don't, the whole community is just trapped in this, in this never ending cycle of reports, against reports, reports, more reports. We, we're all a bit sick of it, whether you're pro or anti, I don't.
I'll let councillor Alban and councillor Critten come on.
Yeah, I I understand, obviously, fully understand what councillor Wing is saying. But it, it doesn't fit with what we're dealing with. Um, certainly, the secretary of state will not take any notice of Ramsgate Town Council saying, get your finger out, mate. Um, you know, he'll do that at his own, at his own pace with it, with his own offices. But I, I, you know, I, I, maybe that's something separately.
Yes.
That Ramsgate Town Council can do would be to write to the secretary of state, asking, asking him to ensure that the matter is decided upon as soon as possible.
That seems a good compromise.
Thank you, councillor Critten.
Firstly, I would support what, um, support what councillor Alban has just said. But I actually wanted in seconding the motion from councillor Alban, I would like it put on record that it is because of the potential for escalating costs, as I raised it earlier. That I do not believe we should keep doing independent reports.
Right, but so you'd like that written down somewhere, or?
Within the minutes of that.
Okay, yeah, certainly, thank you.
I'm happy to accept that within, within the motion, that's, if that's.
Does it need to go, I'm showing, does that need to go in the motion?
Not really, no, it doesn't.
No.
Not really, but I'm just trying to move things on, I was just.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking for it to go in the motion.
Oh, that's fine.
I think it's an element of superfluousness about.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Um, I I take it we're having another recorded vote?
Sorry, Chair. Um, could you read out the proposal again, please? Because I got a bit lost, hard to know when I'm voting.
Yeah, certainly.
Good point.
Yes.
Sorry, Steve. I don't receive them ever. We've got it. We've got Laura.
Councillor Alban, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion is to um uh fully support the content of the independent report that was commissioned for the secretary of state.
End of.
Thank you, we'll go to the recorded vote if we may.
Uh, so if you can answer for, against, or abstain, councillor Alban?
For.
Councillor Ara?
For.
Councillor Austin?
For.
Councillor Crittendon?
For.
Councillor Green?
For.
Councillor Huxley?
For.
Councillor Makinson?
For.
Councillor Moore?
For.
Councillor Nixie?
For.
Councillor Linda Piper?
Against.
Councillor Young?
Abstain. Abstain.
And councillor Wing?
For.
Motion is carried.
I wonder if she's cold, sorry, is the dog's legs going? I wasn't, I didn't know if she was dreaming or cold, but anyway.
Or she's running.
Yeah, so.
I'll pitch guy up.
Okay, thank you, thank you for all your information and thoughts on that one. Um, over to item number four, the events fund, and, and thank you, uh.
Town promoter coming on to do this.
Because um I know that this is something that you'd like to talk to, so if you'd like to join us. So just to keep everybody up to speed, if you remember, last week we were talking about um Covid restrictions, the events that are coming up for Christmas and New Year, um uh funding, but that's a secondary issue. It's not whether we do it for funding or whether we don't do it for funding. Basically, it's about Covid and and keeping things safe. However, let's remind ourselves, if there was funding to be, to be suddenly had from this, we have other things that we can do with it later, but that shouldn't um be false in the decision of 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 what we do with this. Thank you, town promoter.
Uh, so I think Laura has a um report on this. Um, so the, the issues are around, obviously, there's rising figures of Covid and and the s- the space we have for the switch on event. Uh, means that we have a very concentrated number of people that are squashed in. And, and we're talking several hundreds. I think the last time we did it, it was, the numbers were around two thousand. And to give you some indication, we, we tried to move Santa from Arts in Ramsgate to the state and it took us twenty minutes, it was that crammed. And so I've obviously got concerns. I know there's lots of outdoor events, I know private events, and they're all, you know, there are people wanting to make profit. But that's, as councillor Nixie said, that's not what we're about. Um, and we have to consider the wellbeing of the residents. Um, similarly, Faversham have made a decision to cancel completely their switch on event. Um, Canterbury have chosen to do a lantern parade instead of, and a market, which is something that we could perhaps consider, although timewise, it's, it's quite difficult to to put on a successful parade um with such a short space of time. But, but, yeah, um, so my, but my, and and the, the R rate at the moment in in town is one point one to one point four, and I think we've all over the last year and a half learnt that if the R rate's over one.
Yes.
Then we need to start thinking, and and so um I was just getting some actual figures from the government website. Um, so in the past seven days, at East Kent Hospitals Trust, has been forty seven admissions to hospital. And that's up by fourteen. Um, and there's been nine in the last day, so there's a slight increase. So if that's going up as the R rate has done in the past, I'm glad to report there's been no deaths, but actually, what we're worried about with our hospitals this year especially, is the fact that because we're not social distancing, then we may have a triple whammy with Covid related cases, um flu, and um norah rotavirus type issues, along with the unfortunate things that end up being in hospital over the winter. So um I don't, I'm just concerned as the event organizer that we don't contribute to those numbers. Or I could be quite dramatic and say rather than dis- people would, I prefer the residents to be disappointed than devastated this Christmas. And actually, that's what we could be looking at. People are needing to have their boosters, and if they haven't, then they may be more exposed to the risks of Covid. And so, so then my consent about the switch on.
Okay, last, thank you for that. And remember, we're, we're talking about two different events here. We're talking about sort of like the Christmas switch on, which obviously is centered around the High Street area and a lot more confined versus sort of like, you know, the fireworks for New Year's Eve, which I believe this year could actually be moved over to the Port area. So we'll come back to New Year's Eve fireworks in a moment. Let's talk about the, the first one, so the most imperative one was the Christmas switch on. And I know the town promoter is going to go back to the companies in question that they'd have to hire and so on and so forth to look at cancellation notice and everything. What, what, any information on that, town promoter?
I, 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 I think that we will, we may lose some with the medical staff that uh that we have to book, but that would be ten percent, so um at the, at the very most. Um, I'm still waiting for the land train chap to come back to me. Um, but again, I think, I, I think the mi- the, at the, at this stage, it will be minimal. The event costs around three to three and a half thousand pound normally to put on. We, we've obviously paid for event registrations, et cetera. So um I think the, the losses will be around five hundred at the most.
Okay. And just before I open up to questions from councillors, if I could just say one last thing. Um, and with regards to the Christmas market or anything like that, how would that impact on it?
Um.
We, is it everything you're thinking of?
Well, we, there is an option, because of course we've gone through the event process, application process, so we can, and and to the point of the memorandum of agreement, so, which I haven't signed yet. Um, so as I said, we could, another option would be those, there are, I have reached out to people that help with parades and they're unsure it would be possible in that timeframe. But um we could have a mark, that the, the Christmas, the handmade market and a lantern parade, and then switch the lights on, it'd be much more controlled and wouldn't attract the dense crowds that I'm concerned about. Or we just do what we did last year and, um, so that we discourage any crowds. Um, that would mean that the handmade fair would obviously not. They, they could have the option to come down, but it, it's, it wouldn't be as profitable.
Certainly, okay, I just want people to consider that as well, because that's something that I know people have been asking about. I know um a lot of residents have been asking about, and it, and it would be part of and be very much impacted by this. So with that, thank you for waiting, has anybody got any comments to say? Councillor Critten, councillor Wing, councillor Albon, councillor Young, thank you.
I, I want to support what you're saying, having been to the switch on, the density is quite alarming. Um, and, but I would like to see something that is an alternative, and some of the things that you've talked about, um, I would certainly support. So the switch on to be changed maybe to something that's a longer during the day, to reduce that, that cramming in the middle of, so yes, support.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Wing?
I mean, we, obviously, we cancelled the revival fair two years in a row for these very reasons, because when you've got six thousand people crammed into a small space, there is no way you can guarantee social sti- social distancing. And even if we did decide to just have stalls on one side, it was, it was gonna destroy the nature. And it's a hard decision to take, I only got one person who gave me a load of grief, but, you know, one person out of the rest wasn't, wasn't bad. So I fully support uh the town promoter making, ma- having to make this decision. But the, the situation is, like Helen's saying, is that there's, we've got a huge number of people who arrive for a switch on at one time. Uh, the issue at Addington Street was the nature of the road is so, is so narrow and stalls on both sides. So I think we could maybe just switch the, switch the lights on at midnight the day before and maybe have a market event and maybe pop up some entertainment like we do on Addington Street so that the, and and so that the, and then in, support the businesses, put the chairs out, so that there's more of a, of a sort of a, a market shopping feel that people wander through and sit and do something rather than stay all together to wait for a switch on at a certain moment in time. I, I think that might be manageable and I'm, I'm quite prepared to help you out on that.
Thank you, councillor Young, thank you.
I was saying, I was thinking about the Christmas fireworks themselves.
We'll get back to this New Year's Eve fireworks, and we'll, we'll, we'll come on to those if we can in a minute. We're just talking about the Christmas thing for now, if that's all right? Because it's New Year's Eve fireworks, but we, we will just do them next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair, yeah, um, I, I kind of go along with what councillor, councillor Wing said, really. Um, but it is all outside. The government, you know, the government guidelines now, there aren't any specifically for outside events. You know, they're allowing football grounds to be full up with sixty thousand people, you know, which is outside, outside events. Um, I'm more worried about inside than outside, personally, and it's only my personal opinion, obviously. Um, you know, I, I think we should put, we should do something. Uh, our residents will expect it.
Yeah.
Because again, if they're listening to government guidelines, that we should, it, it should be expected. I like the idea of what you come up with, councillor Wing, about lights being turned on.
Every night.
Before, before everyone crowded in and doing that. And if, if we can have that event, if you're saying like of a, a market, where it's fluid and people are moving all of the time, then I think that that's, that's, that's a great idea. I, I think, I, I would totally happily support that.
I've got councillor Ara that wants to talk, and just before I, I, I let her or we propose anything, because I think it's a good idea too. I just want to check with the town promoter, is that something that's doable before we suddenly think, yes, let's do that? And then you say, well, hang on a minute, that's actually quite awkward too.
It is doable, I just still, I'm still concerned about the tradition that's been going on for a decade, that people aren't gonna come down until it's dark. So they'll enjoy elements of the day, and we can try, it's, it's, it's just trying to. What I'm concerned about is we'll still get the same amount of people coming.
Yes.
We're not a football ground and, you know, we're not in it for any profit. And that's, that's my concern, that we're attracting crowds to quite a confined space in the town centre, which we can't get away with. I mean, I've spoken to um the uh public health department at Midway about this and, you know, they've had similar calls from other councils, of course. And you're right, ultimately, it's our decision and the government hasn't got clear guidelines for every single space that there is in the country. Um, but yeah, it could be doable, but remember that it doesn't get dark till four, and that's when the lights normally go on and that's still now.
The lights wouldn't, the lights would be already on.
Yeah, but they won't be visible till about four, because it's not dark.
That's the stalls up at that one.
But, but we can certainly.
Yeah, certainly.
Certainly do that.
I've got councillor Ara, councillor Green, councillor Piper, but, but just before then, but I was thinking, you know, but it won't be a switch on, it's not like people are hanging around for any one particular time. So people might mill down after school or something, but other people equally might come later because they've been working and so on and so forth. So it's not a particular set time, I think it's really the point that people are trying to make it. So councillor Ara, councillor Green, councillor Piper, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I support councillor Wing, and I think we do need to do something uh for the community. And people are waiting for, you know, a market to take place in Ramsgate for so many months now. And I think, yeah, either the light switch the night before or the night, you know, midnight later on, you know, we'll be switching on the mid- uh midnight that day. Uh, I mean, later on, so people might not wait uh like, until four o'clock to see it. They can come back next day or, you know, another time to uh to see the lights. But I think we need to do something, people are, you know, they are really upset and nothing has been going on for two years now. And I think, you know, without the light switch, other activities can carry on. You know, the carol singing, the live music maybe, uh, and obviously the market, the stalls and restaurants can open whole day and they can.
See if they're in different parts of them, the market, Charlotte Court, but the carol singing was in the, 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 the circus, as I like to call it, you know, where the Halifax is. But, um, okay, thank you councillor Ara, so councillor Green and then um councillor Piper, then councillor Critten, thank you.
I think I'm supporting what councillor Ara just said. We, we definitely need to separate the switch on.
Yes.
From.
An event.
An event.
Yes.
Um, and I think we should spend the money um on making the town centre more attractive.
Right.
For that period, uh, and I would leave it to the, well, town promoter.
I'm happy to stand there then, Chair. More attractive.
I see exactly what.
We can cope with that.
Actually, what we can, can.
Too much for us.
Like the train for the kiddies, um, the, the market and perhaps other street entertainers.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, councillor Piper.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I support the idea of something going on at Christmas, and I think we need to advertise it well on every social media platform we can think of, sharing it within our wards. But to make it clear that it's not a Father Christmas, giving out presents with children, sitting on his name, that's not gonna happen. And the switching on the lights isn't gonna happen. But we must make sure that residents have a clear perception of what is actually going to take place. And the, the underlying is that we care about their health when we're not doing it because we're miseries. Um, we're putting this event on for you to enjoy, but to be as safe as possible. I, I think that really needs to be emphasized, and I think it should go down really well.
Brilliant, I've got.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Critten and councillor Wing, thank you.
Uh, firstly, I want to support your comment, councillor Nixie, about, I think that once it gets dark, there will be flow through, there will be some that will come with young children who are coming straight from school, but there'll be other ones, older children, that might come later. However, I'd just like to do a slight adaptation of councillor Wing's comment. Um, if we turn, we've got to turn them on at some point. And if we are turning them on in the dark, there is the ri- and people find out about it, there is the risk that people will start to congregate just to see them turned on. And I would be inclined to put them on at eight o'clock in the morning when it's daylight. Um, and, and it's not a part of the event, so it's just literally, we just flip the switch quietly and then events begin throughout the day, um, as they are, you know, just so people can travel through rather than be congregating. That's the only thing I would adapt from what councillor Wing said.
Thank you, do we have a?
I, I mean, I've already got a, a slogan for us, the lights are on event, so, you know, they get put on, the lights are, the, the lights are on. We're not having a switch on, we're having a lights are on event.
Some of these nights are on and no.
Nobody's doing it, exactly.
This is this, I think this is an opportunity to just have, I I mean, and I can't underestimate the stress that I feel the town promoter must be under. And the stress I was under when I had to make a decision to cancel the Addington Street Revival Fair. When I knew there was going to be a huge load load of people disappointed. But my 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 head was telling me that my biggest responsibility was about public, public health and safety. And also alongside that, ensuring that our NHS, who haven't bloody stopped, uh are not overloaded with mental issues. And so I do I do think we need to acknowledge that 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 there is that stress there. But I think this is an opportunity to maybe spread the event. So 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 we've already, last year we had a a market in in Radcliffe House. We've already got Addington Street, shops are prepared to get on board. So it could be, we could, in order to spread people out, we could we could create an event that included different as different areas. Albin Gardens, can we pop something up on Albin Gardens?
Shall shall I, shall we just back to the quick then and as I proposed from the chair then, that on the night that we were going to do the switch on, we don't do the switch on. But we do have a series of events throughout the various areas as as best planned as we can with short notice, town promoter. Because we realise that's um that's an issue here for people to come down and and as councillor Piper said, we know we we promote this as best we can. And we clarify exactly what it is. So something is happening because people do want to see a market, they do want to come down, they do want to enjoy it. And we want them to be safe. So I propose from the chair that we do a series of events on the night of the switch off. But I like the idea of turning them on at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Um and then we so we and we use the money, as councillor Green said, for that purpose. Are we all right with that? That's my proposal.
Can I just ask a question before I second to you?
Yes.
Because I I I am concerned about the the pressure on the town promoter. And I just want to ensure, I just want to make sure that the town promoter is happy with what we're saying.
Yes, I agree. Well done. Yes.
Um well, I I've I've already explained my concerns. Um I I don't, I think it's, you know, it's a nice idea to have things going on in Addington Street and Radford House and Albin Gardens or wherever. But there isn't, there's an there's an event application in for the town centre, not for Addington Street, not for Albin Gardens and all those other places.
Right, but the shops can put stuff on, isn't it?
There's there there are all opportunities. We just, you know, we'd have to modify it. We wouldn't have a stage. We can have this. An option of, you know, some of the entertainment, if it's not on the stage and people don't gather, we can put it in different spaces. So so, yeah, I mean, as I s- thank you for asking, um councillor Alvin. But I've I've raised my concerns and then it's up to members to then come up with a decision. But I think it would have to be within the town centre parameter.
Yes, actually, I
I I would accept that.
Yeah, uh yeah, yeah. I would like it to be in the town centre, actually, because town centre has missed out so much. Uh you know, we haven't had anything for last
I think I I think whether we want it to be in the town centre or we don't want it to be in the town centre, to be honest with you, it's it's within the capability of the town promoter and the and the limited time and resources that she's got. So if she feels that she's capable of doing something with the town centre, then really and truthfully, it's up to her. Because I don't think we want to impose any anything on the town promoter at all. So and we realise it's going to be it's going to be far more limited than we'd like in in reality, but we do something that's realistic and manageable.
Yeah.
It's not really what we want. It's a case of what we can do. So I've got councillor Mackenzie and councillor Crichton.
And this is purely a a question. If we had a market in Charlotte Court, have we got lights for all the stores? How will that work?
No, well, there there are, there is the festoon lighting in there and there is the street lighting, but we Chris and I looked at the lighting, Chris Barton and I looked at the lighting a couple of weeks ago. And if it does need, there needs there needs to be um a review of the lights.
Yeah.
And so to say, yeah.
Yeah.
Um but we, the 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 market is planned for where it normally goes. If we, you know, we go ahead, it would be in Queen Street for this. But we can start talking about the use of Charlotte Court. And we would like to use it if we do, when we do the late night shopping event, which will be
I was going to
a couple of weeks after that.
Yeah.
Brilliant, thank you. I've got councillor Crichton and councillor Alvin, thank you.
Town promoter raised the query about what is in the application about um it being an event in the town centre. We're the council that approved that, so we can also
Amend.
amend it as we sit here, can we? Can we?
Uh well, I've got a proposal on the table at the moment, so we're not amending anything.
Application is to T D C, so it's a fourteen week that you have to put your
It's not on our property.
But we've got, some of it is our property, such as Charlotte Court though, isn't it?
But not this particular thing is what we're saying. Let's let's keep it simple for the promoter. So sorry, councillor Green, I forgot you. Beg your pardon.
Three thousand pounds is not a lot of money. I don't think we can spread it all over the town. I really don't.
No.
Whatever we put on needs to be as good as we can make it.
Yeah.
Which means focusing in on a particular area.
Yeah.
And the town centre's there, it's there.
Yeah, and I I reiterate, it's it's a it's a case of what we can do, not what we'd like to do.
Yeah, well, it, I mean, if I it, but to put on the event on Addington Street, which is one street, our costs are six thousand. That's that's roughly what we've done and and we break even. And obviously RTC helps us with the grant and KCC and then we, so is there no way we can actually offer the town promoter more money? So if she's going to buy entertainers in who have been hard hit in this panel because they've received no money. But we really should be, but we really should be bringing in local local artists and paying them the going rate, really. So uh am I able to make a proposal that we double her budget?
Well, we've got a proposal on the table at the moment, which actually isn't, just a point. We need to book money later, but let's do it in order.
I'll second it, Chair.
Thank you. Right, so that we do something on the day that the switch on is going to be. So so whatever events that the town promoter can manage
Yeah.
within her remit safely, that we string it out slightly because there'll be a flow of footfall.
Do we have a date for that? Is it twenty eighth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sunday the twenty eighth.
That's why we're talking about this one now, because this one is is quite soon. So I've got a seconda. So that's my proposal. I do have a seconda. All those in favour?
Pass.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, now if there's anything to do with money or anything like that, is that something that we're going to do now, can we? Or we have to do that as a different
Perhaps we should decide to fireworks first, I think.
Okay, wise word. Right, let's fireworks. So this is something that we were looking at. Um let's talk with them on the harbour originally. However, there is an option of um moving them down to the port. Again, we're talking about Covid safety here. We're not talking about money. We're talking about Covid safety all the time. So councillor Young, you were talking about fireworks.
I was wondering whether it would be possible to have them earlier in the evening. I know it's it's not the norm, but as we were saying, children and things haven't been very good in the last two years. Entertainment, if they could, if we could have it earlier in the evening, then it would enable children and people who can only travel by bus to come down and enjoy the fireworks. Um most people come down at midnight, have a car. People who live in Newington and other places outside the town centre is quite a problem to get there.
I'll be honest with you, I don't think people coming down from New Year's fireworks, especially if they've been drinking, tend to come by car. Mainly it's walking. Um so because because you can see it all the way along from the east cliff, all the way, all the way along. So I don't, I don't think people do. I'm not suggesting we don't have them early. I'm just saying that because it's New Year's Eve generally and it's midnight. People tend to come out having had their celebrations beforehand to see the new year in. But I mean
What I'm saying is that people who do not live near the town, who they could be disabled. Um they might be frightened to be out, you know, late at night. I think we could consider this change. It would it would enable more people to enjoy the spectacular.
I don't know what the bus timetables are on New Year's Eve. Though I'll be honest with you, they're so That's what I was about to ask as well. So is that a proposal?
Yes, I do propose.
Is there a seconda?
Uh nobody.
I think it's a nice idea.
I think it's a nice idea as well.
But it's not New Year's Eve.
But well, that's the difficulty. It's what people's expectations are, isn't it?
He's just not waiting until midnight.
So do we have, so do we have a seconda? Is that
Yes, I'll second it.
Right, so all those in favour?
Sure.
Sorry.
I want to vote against the fireworks, so I can't vote for this.
Okay.
Um that would be a a second motion, a consideration.
Yes, after this. Yes. So if we were going to do and it would change the time, that's the proposal on table. All those in favour? All those opposed.
Um I believe that was four, four and four against.
It's five against, I think, wasn't it? One, two, three, five.
Pat, what are you voting? Because you're
Sorry.
Sorry, I was going to say, I'm sure sorry. Do we do this again? Oh, four, the four the motion. So one, two, three.
Well, yeah, I could like it.
Against the motion. Nice big hands up. Well done. Thank you. Right, thank you. Now.
Abstention.
Abstention. Thank you councillor Wing. Right, councillor Green.
Well, I I want to propose that we don't do the fireworks this year. I think the Covid situation is such that it'll probably be banned anyway. London, London's banned there. Other other places aren't doing them. I think as the town promoter said, the outrage is such that the Covid situation can only get worse. And I think we shouldn't be encouraging crowds, people even outside of the town council. Government can do what it what it wants to do. I I personally don't think it should it should be encouraging crowds to get together at all. I know people in general aren't dying, but they are still going to hospital and going to hospital with Covid is a danger.
Okay. I I'm going to ask the town promoter to talk in a minute, but I just, the the only point I'm going to make on this is at the moment, is um we've just looked at the Christmas event and we've tried to stop it being a a set time period where people gather at that one time for that one thing. Because that's what the crowd issue is. So we've asked for sort of like a flow through of things that have happened and that not everybody's coming at the same time. This is an event where we actually do get everybody, albeit strung out, but at the same time, because it's, you know, the fireworks, isn't it? So that's something, again, we're considering for Covid. So it's not a case of like, oh, we've just accepted that one, let's accept this one. We're looking at people gathering at that time for that particular thing. And with that, like the town promoter's point of view, with to do, how it affects you or or cancellation, so on and so forth, please.
And firstly, just as a little bit of history, so we we used to have them on harbour. And that was that was so that was stopped. And then we tried them on the main sands, which worked, but only just. And this time we can't have them on main sands because of the new development. Um that clearly wasn't there two years ago when we lasted them. And in fact, that was where the firing was um sort of estimated to drop, which would not be a great start.
No.
Sands to go.
It's additional, though.
I think Jimmy Godden's come back, hasn't he?
So um so one of the suggestions, we've even thought about doing them out at sea, which I thought would be really cool, but it'd be very expensive. So we disregarded that and obviously resisted. And a bit rough, exactly. So then the port was suggested by our harbour master.
Right.
And he, um we looked and we've looked at measurements and if we went past the southern aspect of the port will be um obviously the my concern, you again, we go back to residents, rural sands. Our residents at the port at the moment, the travelling group, there was obviously concerns about distance there. But actually, it's over two hundred metres from where we're proposing to fire.
Right.
So the fire the the fireworks department are also in principle happy with that position. And clearly, we'd have to consult and 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 let the residents at the port know
Yes.
what's what would what's potentially happening. Um but the firework, the company that we use have asked if they can just uh to get die for setting their bonfires and all of that out of the way. So we're we're going to meet next week if it's decided that it's going to go ahead, just to do a proper site, was it? And in terms of crowds, it's it's a mu- it's a very different atmosphere at midnight. People have got a a a larger space to spread out in. Um a a and for that reason, it's much easier, it's much safer than putting on the switch on event, which is confined with buildings all around. So so I I personally don't have as many concerns about safety. Except that alcohol is involved, which always is a
Thank you.
I've got to use the artist badge.
I've got councillor Wing and I've got councillor Pave Morey.
As a regular visitor to see our pave travellers on the port, I, a two hundred metres is certainly not an acceptable distance away from what are technically flimsy caravans with gas cylinders and a and a and a significant number of dogs that live on site. And I can't believe that the harbour master has said that's safe or the healthcare staff have said that's safe. So I would, I strongly object to that the fireworks being that close to a group of people who live in technically carboned, carboned houses. I mean, I I'd like to support uh councillor Green's motion of not having them. And I think in future years, we also need to discuss whether we have fireworks that don't make noises. Because I never watch the fireworks this year. My dog is totally creaked uh by fireworks. And we've never considered the impact on our wildlife and our animal life. I'm not saying don't have fireworks, but why do we need fireworks that bang?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Piper.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um I'm all in favour of the firework display. I think it's absolutely wonderful. And to see the um the number of people that turn out to watch the fireworks is absolutely incredible. Um and whilst I appreciate that um in one respect, we're trying to avoid crowds. I think if if we advertise these fireworks and try and encourage residents to wear masks, if they're going for their own safety. I I don't know if that's a thing we could do. You know, if you want to go and watch the fireworks, um they they are on. And if if you are going to go and see them for your own safety, please wear a face mask. We're out in the open air, it's cold, uh so it's kind of boxes ticked, but wear a face mask.
I think we can ask, but I think the the chances of anybody doing, I mean, I work in a school and a shop during the weekend. I must be the only person wearing a folks mask out there, do you know what I mean? So I don't know if that would happen. It's an ask, but yes, okay. Um councillor Crichton.
Uh yes, I was thinking something very much uh similar to councillor Piper. Um that in the advertising, particularly as we get closer and closer into the run up of the event, is that bear in mind the uh the current situation, whatever it will be at that time, is that we incorporate and make sure that we promote the advice. I do generally support um the the fireworks. I was also wondering whether or not it might be possible to livestream the event, so the people who may not want to come out.
Oh, gosh.
I don't know. You're watching New York Live, aren't you?
Exactly. You watch London Live, don't you? Yeah.
Because it's cancer.
Yeah, no, no, no. I didn't mean
It's just, you know, I don't know, it's just seems so wrong, or two fireworks on the town.
Councillor Huxley.
Sorry.
You know what the government guidelines are on firework events, public ones now?
Uh well, it's the same as any outdoor event at the moment, which is that, you you know, there there are no restrictions. And it's down to the individual organisers.
Right.
Um there's no restrict, as you know, that, you know, wearing masks, etcetera, we can't enforce it, which is
No, you you can't enforce it, but you can
I think
encourage people to, and then it's their decision, isn't it?
Yes.
It's their decision.
We've asked for people to wear masks in council meetings. It was a, it was on the, you know, a a a an email thread for people. Exactly. So I mean, you know, it's one of those things that some people are going to, some people aren't, you know. If our rate is going up, it's everybody's safety. You think matter of course it would be.
Meeting, I didn't know it was all
No, no, it's all lime, so I understood that. Well, okay. Well, anyway, let's, the crap, I'm going to propose
Could I just add, Chair, that if we use the port, because I've got now got a beam up on it about the port. We are firing fireworks right next to national and international marine environments.
Yes.
That back that actually butt onto that port. And I can't sit here and moan about that cement batch and all the pollution that kicks out. Or the jet skis Or the jet skis that, that light out and go into the River Stour and disturb the seals.
I'm gonna stop you there, because I think we basically need to vote, it's a yes or a no. So people have got their reasons, it doesn't matter what they are, and I don't mean that dismissively, that they're very important. What I'm saying is, you're either gonna go vote for the fireworks, you're gonna vote against them in some ways, aren't you? So I'm going to propose that we vote on the fireworks, are we gonna have them or aren't we going to have them? We do that first and then we can discuss other things. Um, but before I do that, town promoter, if that affects, your information affects that, just in any way?
Just one thing, that the, the, the guidelines for firework events is that you need 100 metres. Just, and that's, and if you look around the harbour area, there, that, it, it gains any options if we take the port out, although I understand the same. But ju, just, and, and, but it is, to be clear about the 100 metres is the, from firing to the, the safe drop that they need. And that's, that's...
And it's only for 10 minutes, isn't it?
Right. So anyway, so to, to go on to the vote, I do actually have a proposal on table from councillor Green, I apologise, I forgot about that. Doesn't have a second yet, but basically he's saying to cancel the, um, fireworks. So that's effectively a no vote, as it were, so it sort of like stands as it, as it is, and I will second that therefore. So, so at the moment, we're looking, are we going to cancel the fireworks? And we don't need to debate this any longer. Are you for the fireworks, you know, and therefore we can talk about the proximity, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the proposal is cancel the fireworks. All those in favour? I love the fireworks, but I can see the obviousness of this, right, so...
So that's five that support that.
Yes. All, all those against.
So that's seven against.
Right.
The motion fails.
Right, so the fireworks are happening, thank you. Now we're talking about where, with regard to the port. Okay? Because that's where they would be. Go on.
So possibly the town promoter could, um, confirm, is there another location on offer or is it the port or nothing?
Unfortunately, no.
The port?
It's, it is the port or nothing. Um, or we take them out to sea, but then...
Oh, cost wise and, and...
We're looking at, at least doubling the amount.
Yes.
And I've even thought about the artist badge, but it takes three votes to tow it anywhere, including the ban, nattle, pontoon.
Yeah.
It'd be impossible.
Go on, councillor Albin.
Chair, I, I would, I would say, obviously, the fir, the first thing is that the town promoter said she's got a meeting next week and needs to see whether that's right, whether the Health and Safety Executive are happy with it.
Right.
Secretary said, especially because of the travellers there, if they're, if they're happy with it, then, uh, in my opinion, it, it should go ahead. If they're not happy with it, then that puts it to the end to it and we won't have them. I mean, it's as simple as that, I think, and I just think we need to, we can move on from that. Uh, and we, we wait to hear what the town promoter has to say following the, following her meeting.
Certainly, I agree.
Also against it, appearing that the travellers are stopping fireworks. That would be quite wrong. We need to make a decision now then.
It's the, it's the Health and Safety Executive, isn't it? It's not...
I didn't say that.
Uh, yeah, I think it's the Health and Safety Executive, I'll be honest with you, whether they think it's right, whether it's possible or not.
I think you're asking for trouble.
We don't have to mention travellers, we'd have to talk about the Health and Safety Executive, surely, I'm sorry, Chair.
Yeah.
This, this is, this is live, this meeting.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah. But it, it's, it's not about that.
But it's not just about the travellers, is it?
Sorry, Chair, sorry.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying, councillor Green, and, and, and you're right, and we, and we must make sure it isn't seen as that. I think what councillor Austin, councillor Albin are saying basically is like, is it safe in general? That's part of it, of course, but that would make the decision for us if it was, um, against. And I, I can understand you wanting to make sure it's not seen as the travellers, you almost help, helping out by trying to cancel it. The town promoter.
And there is also a, an op, a possibility that there could be a concession of cars, which isn't o, on the table at the moment, but that can change quite quickly. It's unlikely, but I've just wanted to say...
Do you know, I'm awfully sorry, I didn't hear you, a concession of...
Delivery of, delivered new cars.
Oh, I see, right, so, yes.
There is, if that happens, then of course then we would be saving the, the, the new consignment, but...
So do we have a timeline of when you'd know by? Because then I'm, if, if it's a go, we need to make sure in a meeting, or do we, we've, we've just said yes? Because we haven't voted on, on this other, we're not going to cancel it. So what's your timeline for knowing that it might not?
Um, I think it would be at, at least another week, but I can obviously refer back to, to our town clerk and, um, the fire, and see if I can...
So what I'm saying, councillor, if, for example, Rebecca finds out that actually they can do it, we as a council need to make sure that that sits okay with us, so we're going to have to vote on whether we agree it should be in that place. So be prepared for this to come back to another meeting in that case.
Yeah.
So Crittenden, then councillor Albin, who had to hand up, might I, I'll say.
Can we delegate responsibility to make that decision? To you and the town clerk?
Thanks.
Sorry, I just thought I'd add that last little bit.
It, it, council, I'd rather the council vote on everything.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I...
I, I just wondered whether or not it was something that we could do once the town promoter has the information needed.
I'd, I'd like the council to vote on, this is a council, this is a Ramsgate Town Council matter. Councillor Albin, sorry, sorry to, councillor, um, town clerk, I'm not talking about, go on.
Um, the, uh, the, the fireworks supplier has confirmed that we can cancel up until the day for a, a full refund.
Right.
Um, there is a town promotion committee meeting in a couple of weeks' time. There is already a very, very busy agenda, but that might be an opportunity for further information following the meeting with HSE to be fed back to you for a decision.
Okay, thank you, now councillor Albin.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I was gonna say, we've already voted on it, we've already voted that we would want the, uh, fireworks, but as, as we've heard, as to whether or not it's safe to actually do so in the place. And if it's not safe to do so in a place, there isn't anybody else, so it doesn't take place. I think it's as simple as that, let's not, you know, the council made that. So if the town promoter comes back to the town clerk and says it is safe, there is no need for any other meeting.
It's only if it's unsafe.
If it's unsafe, it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Okay, and on that note.
It's the delegation.
Shall we go? Go on, councillor Ring.
So, let's assume everything's safe, and although I voted against fireworks, can this firework operator provide us with fireworks that don't bang?
Town promoter.
Their opinion of not banging fireworks are, are a little bit of a fallacy. And they're a bit of an anticlimax. They're a bit more of a, than a... Um, uh, or, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, I have a dog that doesn't like them either, but...
It's not just dogs, it's wildlife.
And it is wildlife, and you are right, that we are nearer to that potentially, um, upsetting the, the marine life, um, that, you know, it's, you know...
Okay, well, I'm gonna move on, because it's, it's already 20 past eight, we've been in two hours. So, um, item, agenda number five, cliff top shelters.
Yep.
With this, I'm going to go to councillor Albin.
Okay, that is registered, uh, second item.
Oh, have, have, have I missed the second item? There I, oh, the two applications, received the community funding, yes, of course.
Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Um, so if the, um, a, a Christmas activity is taking place with a budget of £3,000, um, in the report regarding the fireworks, it was suggested that, um, the, um, an event from the harbour could take place at, for £4,000. That then potentially adds in £1,000 to the remaining events budget.
Ooh, so 3,467.
And then we've got requests from, uh, Pow for, Pow Fanet for £1,500. And Ramsgate Festival of Sound of £2,000.
First of all, can I just check with the Chair of F and G P, can we just?
Not me.
Who is, who's the Chair of F and G P now?
Not me.
Not me.
Davis.
It is?
Tricia.
Oh, town promotion.
Town promotion.
You're, you're as tired as I am. Can you just bring that money over from one, one place to another, is my first question.
From where to where?
Good question. Town clerk.
Um, so, um, a via budget between different budgets does not need to take place. Uh, we're not making a proposal that something comes from a completely different budget. It, there is now, um, less money being spent from the events budget.
Right.
To the tune of £1,000, so if...
But still within the events budget, basically.
Yeah, certainly.
Right, that's fine, that's all I wanted to check, I just wanted to make sure that we're okay with that. Right, so in that case, we are looking at the proposal from Pow Fanet for an amount applied for, for £1,500. Anybody got any comments on this? Councillor Piper.
Um, I object to, uh, giving them any money at all.
So?
I propose that we don't give them the money.
Do you want to elaborate on that at all, or you just wanna keep it simple?
Um, I, I don't think that they, uh, enhance the position of women particularly. Uh, I was invited to take place, uh, at a, uh, as a discussion, to be part of a panel. And the remit was to tell people about how, uh, what it means to be a councillor, how to be a councillor, uh, what drove you to be a councillor and so on. And I attended this meeting and it was not a good experience for me and for a couple of other councillors who were there. And I was harassed in the foyer by women supporting this before I left. Also, part of their art display, and forgive me for going down with the nagilo, but to have a display of female genitals made of lace, I don't think that enhances anybody's skills or anybody's, um, ideas of what power's all about. I just don't want to get them the money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for letting us know that. I've got councillor Mattison next, anybody else?
Um, I have issues with them as well. Okay, which I don't particularly want to know.
Okay, no, it's a, I'm not asking people to, if they don't want to, I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable, I'm grateful for people that, that have. But is there anybody else that has got any other comments about this? Yes.
I mean, I can, I can back, uh, councillor Piper, because I was one of the people on the panel. Uh, and the, the, uh, there was some unfair harassment, really, from, and unfair questions to a number of councillors who were just trying to be there and, and explain why they wanted to be councillors, of which I was one. Uh, I, I, it also is Pow Fanet, and I, I do know this group does do some, does, do some good work to empower women. They have done some, some good work in Ramsgate, but, but on the, on the sheet, what exactly is coming to Ramsgate?
But it does, okay, so, but last year, if you remember, the, the, the problem was they were doing a week's events and we asked what was happening in Ramsgate and, and quite frankly, it was pitiful. This is funding is sought towards the Ramsgate Day to be held on the 5th of March 2022 as a bigger picture for the Fanet wide event. So it's very much a Ramsgate Day, so that's the first thing. Town clerk, you look like you're about to talk.
Oh, no.
No, oh, no, go on. Um, and so basically it just says here, dance workshops, menopause portrait exhibition, creative workshops, tea shop workshops, a youth art trail, makers fair, um, uh, throughout the parish and are free, funding to make up full amount needed and has been secured from Tesco £500 and the Artist Council England £2,935.
Yeah.
Councillor Crittenden, councillor Ar.
Uh, I'm not entirely sure, the total projected expenditure, uh, is that just for Ramsgate Day? Or is it Fanet wide?
The grant?
I suspect it's probably just the Ramsgate Day, but it's not clear on here.
The grant, yes.
One day out of...
Um, there, there is enclosed, um, the, the budget for, specifically for the Ramsgate Day that goes through e, each of the elements and where, where the cost is.
So it is the day you're on.
So that £5,000 is just for the Ramsgate Day, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ar.
Um, thank you, Chair. I do wholeheartedly support this, uh, event, because I think over the years, they have done so much good work in, not only in Ramsgate, you know, around the area, and they have extended their event, I think, uh, to Dover, Dill and other part of Kent as well. And, uh, as you might remember, that in 2019, I, we opened the ceremony in Ramsgate at Wetherspoons. And there are, you know, workshops taking place all over the area in Ramsgate, and I think it goes over five days. Uh, is it five days or seven days?
I believe.
Five days, yeah. Yeah, and I think it empowered so many, uh, uh, women and local artists getting involved in it. So, you know, I think it's a good event and I wholeheartedly support it and I would, I would like to, you know, give it the full amount. Thank you.
So the proposal on the table is that we give them the full amount, do I have a second for that?
Oh, second.
Okay, right, all those in favour? All those against? Right, so.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, that's a whole amount, has anyone got any other suggestions of amounts?
Chair, sorry, I didn't ask if anyone was abstaining.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I didn't.
I'm abstaining as, whilst I, whilst I'm fully supporting empowerment of women, uh, I think you guys here should be the ones who made it.
Yes, and, and apologies councillor Albin, I didn't, thank you for reminding me. So I've got three of them.
Um, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment, um, I appreciate what councillor Piper has said, um, about the very difficult experience there. I, I've thought about this since you, you said that, and my inclination is to not penalise them for maybe a handful of people that are maybe behaving inappropriately against what actually looks like, although I'm not quite sure about a menopause portrait exhibition, kind of like makes me feel, but, yes, and I...
I'm very red faced.
Yeah, well, yeah, whatever. Um, and I, I don't, I, I, I hear what you say, but I don't feel I want to penalise the event for what hopefully would only be a small number of people behaving inappropriately, so I wanted to say that. And I'm happy to propose, uh, a thousand.
Right, so I have a second on?
Yeah.
Right, all those in favour? All those against? Abstain, yeah. Right, so the motion carries.
See, it'll be least...
Thank you. Okay, so that was, that was Pow. If we could, um, the second one is in the back somewhere, the other one is... Ramsgate Festival of Sound, oh, it's right at the bottom, why didn't I see that? Ramsgate Festival of Sound, so funding is sought towards Ramsgate Through the Senses. Again, remember, this is something that's happening in March. Um, total project expenditure, expenditure, um, is £8,000, amount applied for is £2,000. Funding has also been sought from the National Office of KCC and Kent Community Foundation. And, um, if anybody knows anything about Ramsgate Festival of Sound, they do an outstanding job and really do bring groups together. So I propose we give them the full amount, but...
Seconded.
It's open to the floor if anybody'd like to speak.
Is this, Chair, if, if they, something could happen in the town centre?
Ramsgate Festival of Sound did nothing but stuff in the town centre.
No, I don't think, and I don't think anything really actually happened in the, you know, in High Street, Queen Street or King Street.
Then, then ask them, then ask councillor Ar.
This is what, yeah, no, it's, if something could happen in the town centre, that, if we could make a note of that, please.
Okay. So I propose in the full amount, I've got a second, all those in favour? Thank you. Against abstain? Right, lovely, superb, right there, now can we go on to number five? Thank you, Cliff, Cliff Top Shelters, this is...
Did you make note of that, there is something, it's in the town centre.
Cliff Top Shelters, okay, I'm gonna go to councillor Albin, who, um, is gonna sort of like sum up very briefly what we heard, um, earlier from the Ramsgate Society.
Thank you, Chair, and as, as those members who were, I think we were, we, we were all here, um, to discuss... The discussion obviously was in relation to the retention of the um shelters and. That the lease that Ramsgate Society currently has expires in May twenty-three. And they they are asking Ramsgate Town Council to. Be be part of that and to perhaps uh take on the lease of the um. From them uh in relation to keeping these, and and that they they have said that they are happy to uh continue. Their their work in retaining and not retaining, but repairing, uh et cetera, et cetera. Um.
I'm just gonna jump in there and say, so this is Ramsgate Society suggesting community asset transfer to RTC off the shelf.
I was just getting there, Chair.
Sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. I was just giving a broad out.
Yeah, you asked me to keep the meeting straight.
Yeah, so in effect, I think what we as a council need to uh decide is to whether or not we would consider. And start the process of an an asset transfer of these to to RTC. And therefore, as the as the owners, we could then enter into our own um. Uh deal, if you like, with Ramsgate So- Society, uh so we could be, we we effectively help each other in retaining our heritage. So, uh Chair, I would propose that uh that through the town car. That we approach Fanet District Council to see in the in May twenty-three, when the when the the lease expires. That um Ramsgate Town Council uh would like to take these on, depending on what the costs are.
Yes.
And I think that's the very important part.
Certainly. Councillor Huxley is seconding that. Thank you. And again, so we would be sort of opening up negotiations to see how we can move move forward on this. Anybody want to say anything before I go to the vote? Yes, councillor Green.
Just to say that if that if we go ahead with this, I think we would have to budget, looking at these figures. For two thousand pounds a year. Um, repair costs.
Yes.
Because we don't know if Ramsgate last would.
Yes.
Would make the same deal with us as they do with the Ramsgate Society.
Yes.
So it would require a budget of about two thousand pounds.
Yes. Councillor Wing and councillor Young.
I mean, I think given given that we would have the full backing of the Ramsgate Society, who in effect would be still be the main players, then. I I think we support them to to put in any funding application so that so that we identify funding applications that that we then encourage Ramsgate Society.
We can also do that ourselves.
Yeah.
So I don't I don't see funding as particularly a an issue, because there are way, there are ways around that.
It's very difficult to get recurrent funding.
Yeah, I think I think we just have to be conscious of it. I'm not, you know, against, as councillor Green says, and that's true, for anybody that's tried to get funding, it's like, after a few years, then you don't always get it. I think we just can't be naive and thinking, oh, we're going to get funding. We just have to know that there is a there is a cost there. Now, what we're going to do, as you rightly say, is look for funding elsewhere, but let's just know that there is money involved. That's just something that we have to accept. Councillor Young.
I'm just wondering, when we take something on, you know, various bits that we've 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 taken. Do we get any sort of allowance from TDC?
No.
Because they no longer have to pay for it, upkeep it, or whatever.
I think we all know the answer. Councillor Young, don't we sadly?
No, we we don't get anything at all.
No.
No, not even get a kick out of it.
Ramsgate Society has a full repair lease, and they have all the response, but sometimes we have to pay for our assets.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think that's, again, one of the reasons why I think, you know, Ramsgate Town Council in in particular is is. Very keen to make sure that we do have those assets purely because nobody would be looking after them otherwise, because TDC wouldn't be putting any money towards them anyway, you know. Councillor Green.
Well, I'd just like to to collect the two options of an asset transfer or taking over the lease. We could do either.
I would I would personally suggest an asset transfer in the sense that, as councillor Wing explained earlier, if if the landlord. Is particularly awkward and not fitting in fund funding applications. And so therefore stymieing effectively Ramsgate Society, we'd still be in the same situation as Ramsgate Society. Our landlord. Wouldn't be letting us do things, whereas if we were the landlord, we are helping Ramsgate Society, surely.
That's the positive. The negative is if it's just the lease, we can hand it back.
Chair.
Okay, certainly.
The proposal, Chair, is for us to investigate.
Yes.
The issue of uh an asset transfer.
Right.
And and then that should come back to us, the council.
And both of them.
Park has been able to, I'm I'm assuming that the town clerk will do it. Um, that that on- once we have that information, at how much cost, da da da, whether we wish to go forward with it or not.
Good point, good point. Thank you, councillor Albin. Right, so and on that note, I'm going to vote. So all those in favour.
Each other, second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's been seconded. Okay, thank you. Item number six, finance received report. From Miss Ridgford regarding bank signatures and consider the recommendations contained therein.
Chair, I'm I'm happy to put myself forward.
Very much.
Happy to be a signature, if if that's agreeable.
Thank you, town clerk. I'm handing this over to you. Something you'd like to say?
Uh. No, just that uh uh if if we could kindly have um two uh further approved signatories, please.
So councillor Albin, is there anybody else that would like to? Councillor Austin?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Do we have to vote on that, or are we just?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so.
For the bank mandate.
Certainly, of course. So any, I'm s- anybody seconding those two people doing it? I love it. It's like, yeah, you do. Um, right, all those in favour?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Hurrah.
I'm not voting. I'm not voting. I'm not voting. No, well, I just didn't think it was right to vote.
Councillor Green.
Could I ask the town clerk when we're likely to move into the twentieth century with our bank account?
Oh, controversial there.
The deputy town clerk has asked, is a is a weight of input from our bank account as to have us to. Move to um back variable direct debit, online banking.
Right. It's in the process. It's in the it's in the pipeline. Okay, so confidential matters, number seven.
If I could I just ask something on, uh who do we bank with? I don't know.
Unity.
Unity, which are a um a classic town and parish.
Yes.
Bankers, so we will not be the first organisation wanting to move over to online payments. I expect them to have a well-trod path.
Yes.
That we can follow.
I was wondering about that. I was also wondering about their ethical status, actually, in the, you know, uh uh in in the light of our attempts to be more, anyway.
We come back with another matter.
Yeah, not only agenda, Chair, can we move forward? Because I'm hungry, eating since midday. Someone make me cake.
Right, okay.
If I quickly may, Chair.
Go on, quickly.
Okay, um I forgot to mention that if we're having the Christmas market, uh if we all remember last, not last year, the year before. Or was it last year that I did put a motion that on that day, if we could have the uh car park free for our residents. If that can go ahead again for this year, that would be, I think, I think David is councillor Green is aware of it. Is that possible to do it?
No, it's not something that we're gonna put on the agenda at the moment. I'll be honest with you. We've got to get through this, so it's gonna come back to another meeting, or it can go into an email, we'll take it further. Yeah, let's get let's get this done, because there's there's still stuff to go on. We're not finished yet. So. Item number seven, confidential matters. I'm going to ask the excuse of the compress. Have a second. Thank you. Vote on that, please. All those in favour. Thank you very much.